Let's put the end through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. I will call a meeting to order. We have a quorum. I will take a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes. I have a motion in second. Is there any further discussion on that? All over the table. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Rich?
Morning.
Morning.
Um, last week, late, last week, I guess, we found out that the bridge we submitted for the rate grant didn't make the cut. Well, we'll keep doing it. You know, we've, they do these grants every year. Fortunately, I guess, all of them, one of my matches can be written, but whatever. I mean, it's still not in the area. I like crazier than all. The bridge we're working on designing for Dogwood is a standard concrete. I don't even think it's a channel being bridge. I don't even, it's just a standard concrete bridge building. And the consultant got information back from the historical society. They want to do a full-blown investigation, whether it's a, I think these bridges are a dime a dozen in every county and they want it. So if I get the information, then like I'm gonna email the historical people and say, what is going on here? This bridge has no architectural value whatsoever, but they want us to pay for a full-blown report and all this stuff. And I'm like, this, this is ridiculous. So.
What if they pay for it? They want their report, what if they pay for it?
Not how it works.
It's a hazard.
Well, and that got a dent. And it's a concrete. It's not like it's a steel pony truss or anything like that's got any historical significance. They were a standard, they were a standard DOT design bridge. I don't understand the historical value of it at all, but.
It must have fallen over the side of falling over.
So we'll continue to investigate. That one might cause us some we're already gonna be behind now with design because of this other investigation we're gonna do. They won't allow anything until we get that stuff completed. So I didn't get the plans turned in for cold and place recycle on Dogwood. So that's and that's from Highway ninety-two. I'll be looking at hiring sometime next week. Plug up for you for an update today.
Any questions?
Yeah, Rich. Oh, have you looked at? Oh, I call carpenter stub and that. Is that any on the list any time?
Oh, that Wheeler Wood and then the.
No, uh, that's Warbler.
That's what I meant.
Warbler, the carpenter stub, that little line on the.
Yeah, that's on, that's on the program.
I just, I know those two are getting in pretty tough shape.
I think.
That intersecting east and north.
If I remember right, I've got to switch some funding around. I had Wheeler Wood in the STP program. But I think I gotta switch that. I think I'm gonna switch that to Warbler in it because Warbler's a real, they could be funded with that money. It's in the five-year program.
I didn't know that's the couple miles each direction of that. Would that be four fifty, four fifty in Warbler?
Yeah.
Each direction there. Those are pretty, pretty tough state.
Yeah. They're, they're coming up. If the money's there.
Yeah.
Because right now with Dogwood, the way it is, we're borrowed. That depends on how the other projects finish out. Now that we don't have swap bridge money anymore, now it's federal bridge money again. So our twenty percent has to come from our foreign market account. We're now pulling from foreign market paper, the, the twenty percent match. So now we've swap money was always a hundred percent. And now it's eighty, twenty again. So now we're pulling twenty percent of our bridges out of the foreign market account to subsidize that. So now it changes the borrow ahead amounts again. Because these other bridges, we're gonna be, um, we're pulling eighty to a hundred thousand out of the, out of the, well, it's not right either. Now, we're pulling money out of the foreign market account every time we do a bridge now that adjusts our, our borrow ahead and not knowing exactly what our foreign market percentage dollars are. It's just an estimate. Every time we do a project, we ju- we just know where we're at at that point in time. So we can't be borrowed more than two years ahead. We can borrow three years ahead, but if we're borrowing two years ahead, they aren't gonna let us borrow ahead further because most projects are gonna take us beyond three years. So trying to keep fine balance with that. So we'll see how that goes. But depending on funding, we'll keep moving through. But during this budget, it's a whole nother week's worth of analysis on where the funding is.
Right.
But I will say that the tip help get some other roads coming up.
Anything else yet, Rich? Thank you, Rick. Uh, I didn't see any drainage. I didn't see any claims, reports. You got any reports? I don't know about payroll eligibility or salary changes. I didn't see any liquor license. It's, we'll have to, we can jump down to the resolution.
Yeah, that for some reason that one got sent to me and I don't know why, but it's just that resolution for that landfill, like up in Lake Mills, it's just their comprehensive plan. So we're a.
I think you were the third person. I took your name off, I think.
So they have their comprehensive plan and we're just a park above it because we're in their area. So like every twenty, like twenty eighteen, less, less, every five years.
Then you assign it.
We just cross to the.
Yeah, they're five-year deal. There's a party just going to ruin the servants area more or less. So. Yeah, the county, the rural stuff is not supposed to go there, but the cities are all part of landfill in North Iowa. Of Hawaii. Sorry, that's what, that's all.
It's resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six. If their resolution approving a center disposal system planning area for the twenty twenty-four solid waste comprehensive plan update. You guys are familiar with it. I'm not gonna read it. Is there a motion to approve it?
Let's say it.
I have a motion in second. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll call votes. Maybe.
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Lowered, aye. Resolution is out then. Uh, anything new on the, uh, improvement project? Heard anything back from Jason?
Not with the DNR portion of the water project.
He's still waiting on that.
Uh, the water sewer rates, we tried to meet last week, but there's, uh, one of them couldn't make it. So we're aiming for Thursday.
Gotcha. Uh, Melissa's not here today. We had a prior commitment. Uh, anything new on EMS? Continue discussion.
Yeah, we're working on our stuff down there and I heard, um, no. They met Wednesday night over, like there, but I'm like, they may have to do EMS this week. I don't know if they can come up with the funds to cover uh, approximately forty thousand that Ford City booked in the bill. So um, that's just the grant. And I got from Steve that was at it. So.
I hadn't heard back from him.
Yeah, they, it doesn't sound like they can clean the towns and the levy, set the trustees or township levies that will they think come up with the money so they didn't have to do it. EMS is over there as well. So. A good little night, countywide.
It will.
Anything new also? People's service or anything you, nothing going on there? Department had discussions.
I have a vacancy now on my board. One of my longtime board members retired as he moved out of the county. So. I'm just saying, but I'll be looking for replacement forms though.
Gotcha.
Anybody in mind?
We got two or three names. We're looking at Manley and Grafton kind of areas is, because it was Matt's men who retired.
Okay.
And Matt, Matt had been on the board for thirty, forty years. So.
He moved. Yeah, or you know, they were moving.
Yeah, we had a soul replacement, but he's moved.
Yeah, I did hear that.
So it's kind of, we, we have representation from Tensas, from Markwood, from Joyce. So it's, we're just trying to keep kind of for different community representatives up here.
Okay. Um, Mark, you wanna kind of touch base on the batteries up, the sirens of the welcome center?
So the, the dogger warning siren at the welcome center there was installed in the summer twenty twenty and it carried a three-year warranty with it and stuff. And um, they recommend replacing the, the, there's four twelve-volt auto style batteries that are the backup power system for that. They recommend replacing them every three years. Um, and I did reach out. They, they, when they installed it, they said that, you know, after it goes off warranty, that they'd offer a preventative maintenance program and battery replacement service and all that stuff. So I reached out to them to get a cost on that. I emailed that uh, quote that they gave us to Enus and my recommendation on that was that due to the cost of that, it seemed like it was fairly expensive to probably just go with, uh, replacing the batteries ourselves. I mean, the county, through the secondary roads, they have a, a bucket truck that'll reach at the box. The batteries are stored in at about twenty foot. Give or take off the ground. Um.
It'd be.
Yeah. Probably, you know. Um, so my recommendation, the county just replaces those batteries sometime in the next, you know, six, maybe on the next five years or whatever. And, uh, I think they, they gave a quote of a hundred and thirty-five dollars a piece. I, I don't know if they're a deep cell battery or if they're just a regular uh, automotive.
I would almost say that'd be a deep cell. They're kind of sick there and be at the ready. But that's a not a bad price for a deep cell.
They got a starter maintainer on them almost doing.
Uh, yeah.
I would just, I mean.
We just do it ourselves.
I'd recommend just go do load tests on them. And if they're good, leave them be. I mean, there's no doubt. So.
Maybe do a maintenance, maintenance, like every month, do a load test on them and tell you know they're.
Well, then perhaps to get up there to them to actually do it.
Right.
Right. And even if a couple times a year, just load test what they're good, don't change them. I mean.
Yeah, but yeah, my thought was, you know, maybe by next summer, they'd be four years old.
Yeah.
Um, pull them out, put new ones in. If they're still good, secondary roads, you're gonna be using them as a, you know, backup batteries for something for a while.
Um, yeah.
Something like that. But I, I wouldn't probably, because I don't, I don't have the email with me, but it was over two thousand, almost three thousand dollars for them to come up and do that, I think. Yeah.
They're cheap batteries, but we'll do our.
Well, even a trip charge is to come do.
Battery.
Yeah.
Yeah. They might only be for three years.
Well, it's twenty-five hundred and twenty dollars for the four batteries and the labor and travel to come and do it.
You're basically the labor. Yeah. And then if anything needed to be fixed, that was. Parts were wrecked. I think if it needed anything needed.
Yeah, that's just, that's just the labor and the travel and four batteries.
So if we find out that something needs to be fixed on it, we're gonna pay that anyway.
Do they exercise those?
It's supposed to be checked monthly.
But you said the batteries.
The batteries are back up to the, to the main power.
And it's up to the water plant, which is gonna back up.
Yeah. So they're kind of like.
Yeah, we got, we have three, three factors there.
Third level.
Yep.
So check them in the spring. That's what you reckon.
I would probably say, you know, make a moment spring. Just wanted you guys to be aware of it.
So you have anything for us?
Uh, yeah, well, um, elections went fairly smooth last week with the new election, uh, poll book. Um, so we're there were some small, but nothing major. Then, uh, we had, uh, in the reporter's office, we did a upload of images. And for some reason, the vendors messed up the years that they were supposed to look at. And we got some documents in that weren't supposed to be in. We had to do a restore on the database and recover it and, um, so Teresa lost two, two days of, of work, basically, when they had to restore it. She lost Wednesday and part of Thursday. Um, so she's got that back up and running today. It's everything that so, um, I had to do a little bit of work to get that recovered. So they're gonna try again. They can get the right documents without screwing up our existing documents.
Yeah.
A little bit more kind of, when you say I'm, I agree with, but they've been seeing an awful lot of ransomware attacks, cyber attacks and stuff like that recent, in the last recent month or something like that. And they're, they're always out there. There are even more now. So just, you know, everybody be super, super careful on what you're putting. You know, suspicious links or anything like that. And I would say that enough.
Gotcha. Yeah, Teresa just said she's up front of the days.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, it is eight forty-five. So let's do twenty twenty-three cities slash school election canvas of votes.
Yours is gonna be a little bit, uh, this one has the breakdown of that's been seen and, uh, let them go. We start through these. We're gonna start with the city of Fertile. And I'm listening. Maybe I'll just do a body. Well, um, city of fertile, it was Nick Bailey, forty-five or fifty-four. Didn't do it already. Right ends five, under both five and total sixty-three.
You said fifty-four and this has got fifty-five and you said sixty-three. This has got fifty-nine. What am I possibly looking at here?
Right.
Then let's show the under votes as well.
Yeah. But. I don't know if he's getting enough. So.
You're pitching forward, right?
These match these, but then there should have been absentee. In the wrong, oh, I'm in the wrong place. Okay. Absentee there. Okay. Yeah. So, yeah, fifty-nine. We're good again. Okay. And then you'd have the under.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Turn Severson, wait at the bottom. Um, fifty-nine. Um, election day was fifty-eight. Yeah. Um, Andy Carlson had fifty-three. Or fifty-four total. Absentee was one. Um, there were three write-ins. Yep. And under votes were twelve and over votes were zero. Um, for fertile, total vacancy, it was all write-in. So, um, there was a scattering of six. Um, Rick Anderson had twenty. There were thirty under votes and a total of sixty-four.
That one says total of twenty-six.
Don't include your votes.
Just forget that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, um, John Bork for, um, Grafton there. And the school ones won't make sense. So John Bork. Um, fifty-two. And right in swell. They should have sixty-four.
Yep.
Um, the whole city council for Grafton. So we have sixty-seven for Jane DeLee, thirty-three for Randy Holtzner, fifty-five for Tom Kruger, sixty-one for Michael Schaub. There were seventeen write-ins. And then, um, those were, that's the scattering. And then Randy Hyde had twenty-six. He got his name on there and Luke Fosse got his name on there. He had thirty-eight. Um, Hamlet Town Mayor. Can you lay that open down? One with Nolan sixteen, and that's after one absentee. Um, Rick Shulbrock is point six after one absentee. There are eight write-ins. Nine, I know, um, when there were twenty-five for Larry Bergen, thirty-five for Gregory Endelman, nineteen for Crystal Brower, sixteen for Shannon Warren, and then ten write-ins. Hey. So these were write-ins too. Um, there were eighteen that were scattering, ten Greg Holt and eleven Rebecca Martenson. Um, for council at large, it was twenty-five for Jimmy Burgo, nineteen for Rebecca Martenson, forty-one for Judy Sell, thirty for Paul Anderson, twelve for David Moe, and forty-one for Tyler Swenson and two write-ins. Need one more. Um, one for, um, to fill a vacancy and as Terry on it, fifty-six. Eight were absentee. And then there was one write-in. Douglas twenty-five and writing. Um, Timothy had three hundred fifty-nine. Write-ins were sixteen. Superman. Um, city of Malley Council, um, one of seven for Scott Hugo, seventy-nine for Dan whatever's he came. Um, one thirty-three for Richard Baird, um, fifty-four for Dee Dunbar, two write-ins. Sweet too. Um, Gary Gerling is one eighty-two, Matt Thompson, one thirty-three, Mike Bodie, two fourteen, Dan Reader, one ninety, Dave Tenold, one seventy-nine, Andrea Schreiber, or it handicap. Um, one, two seventy, write-ins two. So next you have, um, Center Springs School. And that will be, that's a, yeah, so that doesn't. So, um, Nancy Lund at a hundred and sixty-nine, Sean Arthur had a hundred and twenty, and there were two write-in. Um, Amber Nearing, one eighty-three, Joe Rowe, Ralph, one thirteen, Joe Ryan, one twelve, and write in one. Um, David Root, one nineteen, Josh Furman, one sixty-six, and write in two. Um, the public measure had two twenty-nine, yes, eighty-four, no, and fourteen under votes. For a city, Cody Henninger had sixty-two, Charlie Ford had fifty-six, write in one. For a city, for your term, um, Rick Wiley, sixty-two, write in zero. For a city director, three, Eric Kingland, thirty-eight, Beth House, thirty-six. For city director, four, um, Kim Severson, seventy, and write in for city district five, Troy Thompson, sixty-five, write in one. Lake Mills director, two, district two, um, Kim or Kristen Wempin, seventy-six, write in zero. Lake Mills director, district three, Ryan Joint, eighty, write in zero. Um, just Lake Mills district four, Karen Osh, Oshine, seventy-six, write in zero. And then there should be a public. Public measure is yes, fifty-three, sixteen, no. And then Northwood Tensive, Don Anderson, two ninety-seven, Cynthia Pambern, three fifty-one, Shannon Brunswick, three thirty-nine, Jamie Nelson, three fifty-nine, and there are nine write-ins. And Thane Anster. William Morrow, sixty-nine, write in zero. District two, Steven Grove, seventy, write-ins one. We had district seven, Kyle Tabbert, sixty, sixty-nine, write-ins two. Nyann, District Director, District Six, Andy Jolson, eight hundred and thirteen, write in six. Okay, we'll sign all this down here.
Good morning.
How are you? Pick me.
There you go. You wanna hand it to me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, for now, we'll sign.
Sign them afterwards.
Yeah. He only sent me with five copies of the. I can be in the hot seat. I've got to make sure that he doesn't feel bad that you didn't take one.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of Elder Bridge Agency on Aging. And, um, so before you have our annual reports, um, July of twenty-two to June of twenty-three, and then in there is also just a sheet that is pertaining specifically just to work counties. So you can see, um, that front sheet just talks about all of the services at Elder Bridge. Um, supplied for the citizens of your county. And then um, supplied for the citizens of your county and then compares FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three. Um, and so you can see that um, with those dollars that um, you guys generously gave to us, what we did with those. Um, and all of those services we had, and then the back just kinda gives a little summary. Um, and shows that for every dollar that um, we received from Worth County, we provided fifty-one dollars and eighteen cents of services to the citizens. Um, and so this year we are asking three dollars and fifteen cents per scene.
What was your last? First year?
Two ten, I think. I remember, I think it was two-ten. As you can see, numbers um, have gone up, I believe, in almost every category. Um, homemaker is actually down a little bit, but some of that might just be like, maybe people didn't, um, we didn't have the funds, I think, to actually provide that. We had to um, take some of our funds from other sources um, and actually um, put them towards the congregate and home-delivered meal program to help cover those because of the increase in numbers there. Although the, you know, nutrition program is huge, there's also all these other things that we do provide, so um, and some of those are um, direct care, others are, you know, helping um, are provided direct care through other entities in your county too, um, like Worth County Health Department and things like that.
Seeing north of the home-delivered meals went down and the other ones went up, so they must be getting out of the houses and coming back to the center down there.
I think some are. Um, we've also, you know, just really looked at that. One of the things we've had to do is just really look at who qualifies for home-delivered meals. Um, yeah, because COVID, you know, people got used to getting home their meals delivered because they could, senior centers weren't open. Um, and we've had to, you know, there's been some people we've had to coax out of their chairs to say, you know what? Um, you get out and go out into other things, um, so you really need to get out to the senior center too.
That's definitely.
Yeah, and we're really working with um, the senior centers. Um, and Sandy and I have had several conversations too, as, with other groups about how do we get people into the senior centers? Um, and working with those senior center boards to, you know, what are some activities you can do? And, and looking for grants themselves too um, on how they can help keep their center open, because that's the crunch. Um, with not receiving as much federal and state funding and with our numbers up um, from the, the last year, um, we've had to cut what we were able to give. Um, just as, um, and spread that um, lack of wealth per se to um, all of them. So saying, okay, who do we not give any money to? Um, we just kinda had to spread it out, so. Not an easy chore.
No.
So.
I know what it Manley has been struggling, keep the doors open. They've done some fundraising stuff. It looks pretty good in Northwood. Doing okay, or?
Um. Really, Manley is in, in, in position very well, I was telling um, Jody. Because when the home-delivered meals tightened up, they're the only game in town. Unless you wanna eat at home, they're on a restaurant.
Yeah.
In Northwood, what would happen is that we'd have gotten one or two people maybe, but not a lot. And the concept was that, yes, they'd come in, they'd have meals with their friends, with other seniors, they'd socialize, but that's good both physically and emotionally. But in Northwood, you have several places, choices of places to eat lunch. And so we didn't see the big influx. Manley did. I was over there for the soup fundraiser the other night. And bought two. You've got a great site manager over there that is really working hard to, to keep that one going.
Yep.
Um, we are working hard trying to encourage people to come for lunch and then stay for cards or stay for games or stay whatever we're doing uh, in the afternoon. And it, it's working to some extent, but like I said, people have a lot of choices.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it should know Northwood's, it was the amount, they're struggling a little bit or not, or if they're, you know, if the trends are the same, or?
The trends are, are, are pretty stable. The only thing we're struggling with is the cost of meals because grocery prices have gone up.
Yeah.
And because Elder Bridge has to be really tight with every penny.
Yeah.
And so consequently, we, when we invite people to lunch, there's no price set. It's a donation.
Yeah.
But the suggested donation is five dollars, and that's for a full lunch. And um.
And sadly, that does not cover.
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't cover the price.
And so uh, that, that's the only thing that, and we hear that across the board, that, you know, we can't have as many roast beef meals. We have to have more chicken, you know, things like that.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions you got on the finances, guys?
Come and have lunch with us sometimes.
And I've been offered up, uh, uh, mainly a few times, and I do need to get up there probably more often.
The food is, we're lucky to have onsite meals. And some senior centers, they've lost their cook, so they couldn't afford them. And so now they bring it in from a restaurant or a, a grocery store deli section or whatever. Not nearly as good. Ours are hot, cooked, fresh bread to the people. So come and have lunch with us.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you guys, and have a great day. Thank you very much. We appreciate every penny.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we go back to the resolution for the canvas. Just completed. Sign everything after the meeting.
Uh, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven. Uh, the Canvas of the Worth County Election Results for the combined city school election. Is there a motion to approve this?
Oh, motion.
I'm sorry, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on it? Uh, roll call, folks, maybe?
All right.
Don?
I.
Lowered eye, resolution passes.
We'll do that again.
You don't need to sign this, right?
Yeah.
Get this one all the way.
We're gonna do it again through. For all the other areas or whatever.
Um, just, I'm just um, in control for Central Springs.
So.
So I. Yeah, I send information out to other counties and when they send me some different. Yep.
Gotcha. Um, Supervisor Weekly, what'd you have, AJ?
I don't know. I don't think I had anything, actually. Let me look though. Um. Oh, hey, nothing last week.
Mark.
Uh, we had to have that board meeting. Just one of our general stuff, you know, incident, some budget, we're out of budget and stuff, uh. We've got one incident in some county where they got a health trouble or something, one of the counties. Anybody got to handle time with fashion or when you were, you were, fire burn, did a good job, they said that. Hit the leak under control, so. What is it?
Good. I didn't have anything. Uh, did you guys look over next week's agenda items? You see anything we need to? Anything different there? And you've got hazardous communication training today at eleven and one?
Yes, that's what Kurt is gonna be probably.
Gotcha. I don't see anything else on here. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Say. Have a motion and a second. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.